I didn't want us peanut.
Thank you.
They put me in a different rig that doesn't even have radar, so you sound like they need.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. Okay.
We do have Rebecca and David are on.
Okay. Let me go ahead and get in here so I can see who's here.
He can watch us.
Yeah. All right. Well, good morning all for this. It's a beautiful day.
Yes.
Start. I guess actually I would like to start if we could with just an update from the the workshop on on Monday. I don't know. You you were the participant.
So our workshop on Monday had all the same people that are in the room and on the Zoom. We discussed which direction would make the most sense to go. And the first agreement that we came to is is that the code compliance officer doesn't need to be in the building department. And Rebecca has done some research on where they're housed throughout the state. Rebecca, are you there?
She is.
I am.
Okay. And so we we came to the idea and the conclusion that the place that it could be housed is in the sheriff's department. But I said, we would need to have a conversation with my seatmates about what that would entail and what that would look like. Because that would be, you know, if it's underneath the sheriff, we have no oversight of it. Then it would need to be the nuisance board of appeals would be housed like underneath us. So to create some checks and balances. And that's one option. Another option that Rebecca and I spoke about yesterday is is the the nuisance officer could be underneath the commissioners. Because we hear about them all anyways. That would be, you know, something different. But I wanted to leave that up for the general discussion. But Rebecca and everybody's done a lot of hard work and effort getting here. Lynn has worked her tail off creating different versions of the document. And where we can go. And we have a really productive discussion. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Rebecca, would you like to give your overview of how you understood it since I'm sure we see things differently?
I wouldn't necessarily say that. Um, I I think the discussion you and I had yesterday, just about what we're looking at is more than just nuisance abatement code, which is 1538. We're really looking at.
A little bit. I need my third cup of coffee. All right. All right, go ahead Rebecca, I'm sorry.
So Jake and I spoke briefly yesterday after I had done some research and looked at our code more, and I think what we're really talking about is more than just changing chapter 1538, we're looking at actually changing code enforcement completely. So this is not just pertaining to nuisances. This would be code violations, health department violations. And planning department, any any violation would be sent over to this individual. So where I think we had started at, this is a nuisance issue. I think we're looking at a bigger bigger change to our code.
Okay. Have any any thoughts as far as you referenced or Jake, you referenced how how it's done in other counties, any? I didn't see anything on that. Anything anybody wants to share as far as has this model been used in other places?
I can speak to that as to my research. I I did spend quite a bit of time trying to find other counties that have sent it over to the sheriff's office. I'm aware of one and that's Shalane County. They did it last year. As far as I can see, no other county has done this. You certainly have some cities that have worked with their police departments, but Shalane did it last year and they had some of the same concerns in terms of of who has oversight then, especially when you have employees in that department being, you know, the sheriff is not an expert in code violations in terms of building and planning. And so now they have another employee under them that's working to do that enforcement. So so they they had some of the same concerns, but as far as I can find so far, that's the only county that has done that in Washington State.
Okay. Then I guess I would open up the discussion. Thoughts?
I'm in favor. Code enforcement all the way through has been an issue for years. And we need to do a full, not not just nuisance, but code enforcement as well. And we all know that it's going to become more and more apparent and there's going to be more people more complaints coming in. And so doing a full rewrite, it's going to touch on, you know, a lot of different pieces within the the county code, I think is the appropriate way to do it. And if we're going to have somebody doing it, I think the person would kind of like the same thing with a public records officer, you know, where you have a centralized location for a clearinghouse. And then that individual would then work with the individual department heads and move it through that away. Where it's where we put it, though, that's the question. And your guys' thoughts would be, you know, happily appreciated.
Okay.
Right. I'm good with all of that. And on the part of where we put it, I think it needs to stay under commissioner's jurisdiction.
Yeah, that would be the issue I I I'm struggling with a little bit is the as much as I'd love to hand off the whole thing. I mean, I definitely, I mean, there is a certain appeal to having law enforcement just because that's you're you're basically dealing with all this stuff already. This is in your book of business. As far as the not so much the as far as like the hard line, the problem cases, the ones that take the that's the issue. I mean, a lot of code enforcement, nuisance abatement, all that stuff, 95% of it goes off without a hitch. As far as they may be some difficulty, you know, you have some people that they really either don't know or didn't care. And then once they then they comply and it's not a big issue and and but the we, most of our angst and turmoil is around actually a pretty small number of people that are, they know, they know they don't care and they're going to have to be forced against their will into compliance. And that those are the people that it's really most appropriate. But that's that's really in your area of expertise. That's you. You also have those, you're, I I'm assuming your interactions are probably the same. 95% of your interactions are are easy, they're fine. It's the 5% that causes 95% of the.
And I would say that 5% as far as the nuisance issues, we're probably already dealing with.
Right, yeah, right. Because you generally, it's not confined to a single area of someone's life. Yes. You know, oh, no, they're a model citizen in everything else. No, generally, generally not. So I like that part. The the part I am a little concerned about is the oversight as far as these are, you know, because there is you know, some of these are many of them, they're planning issues, they're building department issues, and those are those are certainly departments that are commissioner led departments. And so there would be, you'd have to figure out some way to have some.
I don't mind keeping it under. I don't know, that's the hard part, because to me, it's all of the other ones are far more often, far more common than the ones that it'd be really nice to have a badge for. So I I mean, if there was a way to funnel that smaller 5% or 10% over there, that would be fine, but I don't want to. So I I don't think we would behoove ourselves at this time to give up oversight.
He really is good at hiding behind that.
So I would open up, yeah.
I have a question. If he gets something that's one of the easier things to fix and he says, hey, Lynn, I have such and such. And he gives it to me because that's my level of knowledge, or he gives it to Moji or David because that's our area, felt septic, he gives it to David. Then we would work what's our topic. That would bring it back under you because I am under you. Would it not?
Potentially, but it's also what if we have a situation where it is a, you know, it's a health department thing, it's a failing septic system. It seems having an officer respond to a failing septic system seems like a nuclear option. And that might in some ways incite more or, oh, we have a code which definitely, septic system is actually a really good example because we do have, we we have another one I saw. Interchange on the west end. So would we vision, would we envision this as a, as far as there, it's a sheriff's department employee? Is it actually a uniform commissioned officer or could it be something?
So we had some discussion about staying away from that, that it would be a separate thing. The sheriff and I have talked about it and he envisions more like a detective type of position where it's somebody that would be full commissioned, but wouldn't be out there responding, writing their calls. So it's not a uniform showing up. It's and and when we had our discussion, it was kind of like a a central place to put the complaint. And then that person would have to be very good at working with other departments and working with members of the public where they're into gaining compliance, like it's not necessarily about enforcement in the in most of the complaints, it's about gaining compliance. So they would take the initial, maybe that, you know, everybody calls the sheriff's office anyways for these issues. So that the initial deputy would take a complaint over the phone and forward that complaint to a co-compliance officer or detective, whatever we want to call that position. And then that person would go out and do the follow up with that, make contact with the person, hey, somebody filed a complaint. And I think we talked about for nuisance things, it would still remain at the two complaints within a five mile radius. Has to be named, signed, all that kind of stuff as it is now. So it would necessarily change that part of it. But I think there was discussion about an actual code violation outside of the nuisance side where it would be a single complaint. Because those are safety issues, those are issues that there could be some liability on. So I think the way that we initially looked at it was it wouldn't have anything to do with a uniform type of position. And I would still envision that that would that that would remain as it is.
So you're saying detectives, I mean, they would have to go to academy?
So what we, you know, with detectives, we take people that already have experience. So it'd be somebody within the department already. And then we would backfill with somebody that would go to the academy and cover that stuff.
What is the price difference between our normal code compliance officer?
Four dollars an hour. If I'm not mistaken.
I will, I will give you credit, sir.
Right now, as I find it, it's 2205 to 2877 per hour is what we pay for the code compliance position, that's what it's budgeted for. And I believe that our full time is about 26 to 32.
The other thing is if it goes underneath the sheriff, it's part of the bargaining. Like the bargaining, you've got all the.
It would be union regardless. But we kind of talked about the process would be like a complaint would be filed. The the detective would do. Basically, the detective would get the, or the initial deputy would get the complaint. The detective would go out, follow up with the people, find out what the issue is. And then they would do an an investigation and that investigation would involve the other departments that have specialties in those areas. So if it's a septic issue, we bring in the appropriate agency for that. If it's a nuisance like trash issue, a lot of that is just going out and working with people. So there would be other other ways. And then the detective would put together that case and present it to if if it rose to that level, then they would present it to the board for enforcement recommendations or you know, if it gets to an abatement situation, there's a lot of cost involved in that. So it would.
Envision as far as the way the current code works where that was authorization to abate would still rest with the board.
Yeah, because otherwise.
Spending money.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's like, oh, we just spent $200,000 on abatement. We need that money and it's kind of like, well, we're already in a tight spot where we're coming up with 200 grand.
Right.
Backfill, we've got a process for that.
Okay.
How hard do you foresee it? If we do that and it's a union position, getting nuisance abatement in that contract, so that detective is also picking up trash?
I wouldn't anticipate that they would be the ones up picking up the trash. And I don't know that our current, I don't know that our current code compliance officer was out there picking up trash.
They weren't, but in my vision in the future is when we send these out to bid and get 50 grand is an estimate for two days' work.
Sure.
I would like that position to also be doing it. I would like when we rehire public works, flaggers or whatever. When one of them leaves, instead of filling that position, throw that position out, rewrite new position that says flaggers slash occasional nuisance abatement. So that when we're doing one a year or two a year, we have our own employees and we don't have to pay somebody four year into year to do it. That's my my hope.
I would think that if we had a a co-compliance officer that was overseeing that they would they would be on scene sort of supervising the project. I don't know, I don't know about.
It's going to be very hard to get them to pick up trash.
I I don't know the union position on that and I probably shouldn't speak for the union on that.
Right. And I see that that's, I mean, that's that's certainly relevant, but I see it as a side issue as far as when we got the abatement is only one piece of it. And that's really a, that's grown out of the problem of, you know, we always put it out to bid and we got bids and the private sector did it. The whole conversation has come because those numbers are crazy numbers now. And so we're looking at other alternatives, which would be either using public works folks, doing it ourselves, basically not kind of the same thing we've done.
We're hiring.
Right.
No different than we've, you know, like we've taken on buildings and grounds has taken all, you know, we've hired a carpenter. It's because it was the same thing. All that stuff used to go out to bid, you know, or or contract. And we either can't get anybody to do it or the numbers we get, we can do it in-house ourselves for half as much. So we're, and I see this going the same way.
Sure.
That it's just, so it might make it, we might actually do more abatements if we could, you know, we actually could get a little more value for our dollars. So and that is something, you know, if we're going to be, if it's going to be how the abatement part of it is going to be, if we're going to have county crews, likely it would be in buildings and grounds. It would be in the sheriff's department.
And that would.
But an interesting question of is the code, you know, going to help out with that?
And I think a lot of it depends on who gets in that position. And, you know, I shared some stories about the time at Click-It-Tap. There were, I think we we counted something like 37 or 31 abandoned vehicles in Click-It-Tap. And we sent Robert Bianchi down there. And Robert got every single vehicle moved without writing a single ticket. He didn't have to use any enforcement. And it was just the way that he approached people and he just stayed on people that there was issues with. So I think.
It's hard to say no to him.
There are some deputies that are like that. It's just they learn how to.
There's two good options there. And and I have to be politically correct when I say this. There's the way we've always done it in the past, which is a nice, sensitive, approachable
Right.
way. Or the way with the badge, which you're gaining authority. So you don't, that that middle one is the mistake. I'm I'm kind of, I'll go that way or I'll go this way.
Right.
I want to go where we were.
Sure.
Well, understanding that, and I I won't speak for the legal folks, people do have due process rights. That it's the, you know, we don't go the, show up with the.
Yeah, saying you're doing this.
You're doing this, yeah, you're going to do this or else. So we do have to follow the process, give people a chance, yes.
So two other things, if it's housed in the sheriff's department, you're around the sheriff's officer more often. The sheriff's department is accustomed to writing reports. They are accustomed to going on stand. It's a regular occurrence. If this moves through the process to abatement or to that next step, at least writing tickets and all that, that is something that the sheriff's department has the training and they do that regularly. And they can help train internally for the position. The other, on the backside of that is if you hire somebody who isn't working out very well, we're having issues with the constituency about how this person interacts in public, how they're dealing with it. The commissioners have like zero.
Right.
And that's my words. If if it turns into we don't believe the position's working correctly, there's there's nothing we can do about it at that point.
No, our our virtually our only oversight is in the budget process and that's a really that's a, that's a tough tool to use.
Sure.
Both practically and politically, frankly, because we, you know, we don't, we don't do it that way. That is the problem. So that that's the only, I'm I'm willing to try it. I think it's a, I think it's doable with some way of, you know, we're we're fretting about the what ifs. What if this, you know, because I can see that we'll get because we have, I would say, and I'm not going to name in the sheriff's department necessarily, but we have other, we have employees that work for other elected officials that I've been told before, I don't work for you, you can't tell me anything. And that happens. And so this would be no different. It'd be like, once we hand this off and, you know, when you say you get all the complaint, that that's true in that people do call 911 or they call law enforcement, but they also call us about things that we don't have any control. And this would be one thing that they would if there was bad interaction. We will get it and we would have zero oversight other than just have a conversation with the elected official that the department's under and say, we're we're getting these complaints. What are you going to do about it? And it's, you know, in some ways, yeah, it would be nice if they'll say, oh, it's not, not my monkey, not my circus.
There's some of that.
That would be nice.
Come back on you anyway.
It will. They already feel, I mean, there's a lot of constituents already feel like that, that they're getting passed around back and forth between between people and we are supposed to work as a team to to get things done.
Does our prosecutor have any thoughts if he's still back there?
He's behind the post. Nope. Okay. I haven't heard from, you must have, what were we talking about, buildings and grounds? You heard?
No, I got the email and I'm like, whoa.
Actually, we were just talking about.
We were, that's what I expected. Everybody's on Zoom, like you better get over there.
You're not in the meeting, you might be.
Yeah. Do you, as we get back where we were, we, the reference to buildings and grounds was the you know, in the future, one of the things we would look at is perhaps doing abatements ourselves, using county employees. As we have done, I was giving the example of, you know, we've hired a carpenter and it really grew out of, we couldn't, you know, we either couldn't get anybody to bid on anything or the numbers were, we could do it ourselves for quite a bit less. So that's what we were talking about, you know, the potential, if if we're allowed, you know, there's still some questions that we have to answer if we're even allowed to do that, use our own folks to do abatements. I I mean, personally, I don't see any issue as long as we're I think the concern was about, because we do charge for that because that's how we do it now, that charge goes against that property. If they don't, it doesn't get paid, it gets assessed as a as a tax lien and you either pay it in three years or you are subject to foreclosure, which we have we have done before, unfortunately. And that that was always the kind of the backstop because we would generally the abatements, we could, the property was worth at least as much as the abatement cost. Well, then we found that's not true anymore because our abatement costs had spiraled to the point where it costs three times as much to clean up the property than it was worth.
Right.
And so we are literally losing money doing it this.
Can you clarify the three years to pay off the lien before we foreclose?
Because it is put on as a, we we have the option, we've always chosen to, we can do it as a general obligation. I'll again defer to counsel if I'm misspeaking, but we have done that. Which means it's like a judgment, it's no different than anything else and it really doesn't have any teeth.
When they pay it.
They pay it when they pay it or we can choose to do it as a tax, just it's put onto your general, your tax bill, just like you. And then you either pay it or in three years you are in arrears and you are subject, goes through the process that that the treasurer does.
Know that, I thought it was just a general lien.
Oh, no, that's the, that's the teeth. So in fact, part of those surplus property sale that we just had, except for the 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 one in line, the sheriff's one, that's what those were, you know, it was just cleaning up the stuff that we had foreclosed on for me. There the one in Wishram was an abatement that we did, the one that there was one before Click-It-Tap that we had, we had done. And and quite often the people, it it's it ends up that it's economically to people, it's like, well, it's actually, it's cheaper for me to just, here's the property because the year it costs more and you're, and we're out, the difference is not like just selling the hook for the difference. It's just, it's against the property, so.
I would say I six months ago, a year ago. I I love the idea of this being in the sheriff's department, that was my push the whole time. Honestly, recent issues have brought concerns to that, to that, so I mean, I I, like I said, I still think it's the right place for it. It's just giving up the, if we don't think it's working correctly. Now we're going to have a public fight over how to manage it. And I don't want to have a public fight over how to manage this favor.
Rebecca, is there any other places other than Shalane County that was the sheriff's department? Are all the rest of them in building or is there anywhere else that they're housed in like their own thing or community economic development or anything like that?
Most of it looked to be in building departments. I, some counties have like a combined planning and building and they've carved out sort of sub offices within that department. And held it there. I haven't found any, and I can look further. I was really focused on where they have done the sheriff's, transferred it over to the sheriff's office when I was searching.
Okay, I haven't heard from planning yet. She's like, I'm not.
She's as long as you don't house it in.
My main concern is I want to be sure wherever we transfer this position, it's going to continue to be a centralized location. It's not going to split among different departments. Because I believe we'll continue to work with this person. Because we are the subject. Because we are the subject matter expertise. We, just like before, we are part of that process. But I think it's important to have a centralized location. So if anyone wants to know the status of the case. They can only contact this one person. It doesn't need to, you know, call three different departments to find out where we at. Because a lot of time is more than just planning issues. Other departments will get involved as well. So, uh, that's my only concern. And I think the discussion so far, this is going to be a centralized location. I'm just not sure which department is going to be up there.
Maybe we'll put it under the commissioners as a code compliance and public records officer.
Except there's, there is value to being in the sheriff's department because they know how to do an investigation. They know how to write a citation. They know how to testify in court. There's a lot of pluses there. If I can get over the, the risks.
Like I said, I'm, I'm willing to try it. There's, there's a lot of value to it as far as for those things. I'm just trying to figure out what, is there a way? That we can still have some. Short of the, you know, nuclear options.
We just have to say, hey, next year, we're not paying for that position.
Right, we're gonna let it or take it back. I mean, I guess it would be no different than the, um, although we, we saw what. You know, the recent discussion that was raised over, uh, management of the jail. Say, that is not a mandated, that is not a required, that that is, that department is. Under the sheriff's department. It's in many places in the state. It's not the, but it's anytime that's even, which first off. I have no interest. Let's be clear. I, uh, I'm just using that as an example. Uh, that is something that. There's a lot of confusion out in the public about that that is like, that it's, if, if a board was considering that. That that is a, um. Doing something that's improper, that is like trying to pull authority away from another elected official, even though that that isn't actually true. That that, that, that conflict doesn't already exist. I don't want this would be the same thing where this is not, uh. And it's like, yeah, that used to be under the board, but now it's in the sheriff's department. And so if there was, if it just didn't work. For some reason, that it's now, we've created another one of those situations where a board or a future board was like. You know, we don't think that's working or we wanna do it. And so we're gonna take that back in, in our house and we're gonna park it over here. And, but, you know, the planning director's gonna run the whole thing and. Public works is gonna do it all day. Yeah, you won't. Then it causes all this, you know, firestorm over it, which it's really a non-issue because that's not, that. And so trying to find a way to, because I do, I like the, because when, for those hard things. One person already has all that training, has been said. That's, that's the thing. It's like you can build the case, you can do it right. You end up in court, you know, because it's, again, there's due process things with this that have to be followed or we can't do. We can't move to the next step. And we've had issues before, you know, because again, this isn't something that we typically do. And unfortunately, I think the times have changed in that I think. Our old approach where was more the, um. You know, Mayberry, you know, where you just, you know, Sheriff Andy goes out and has a discussion about, oh, with, you know, you need to clean your stuff up. And that will still work for lots of people, but we also now, people are different and they, they're more combative. They're not interested in, they don't care what the community thinks. And so a lot of those kind of soft tools that we used to work are ineffective on those, the, the hard line. People where it really is, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an enforcement issue for that small little piece. And if you, if you're, if we're doing that, you have to follow all the rules. And it, because if you don't, if you make a mistake, now you have to start over again. And that's, you know, we've, we've had that happen. And so. So, um. Yeah, I'm willing to, I, I, I'd be willing to try it anyway. And so maybe that's what we do. Maybe we do it, we could do it. We could try it as a pilot, maybe as a year.
My worry about that is if he takes a, a road deputy, turns them into a detective, rehires as road deputy. How do you take that position away that you're, if the trial doesn't work? Because now you have one too many log for.
You're just, you're just upfront about that from the beginning, any more than we fund grant positions all the time that we always say. Maybe one year's not fair because that's maybe we say it's a longer period that. And maybe the way you built it into is the thing, it actually has a sunset where unless you proactively do something, this will go away. Two years or three year, whatever, or sooner. I don't know, because it's.
Yeah, the other thing is there's a lot of retirements that are planning on coming up in the next three to five years. So I think if it's a position that you fund and then we get to a point where somebody retires. And the position's not working out, then we make changes at that time.
Right.
That way, nobody's losing their job. It's not like.
Right, that's my thing. I don't wanna take something away.
And that would, that would be my concern if it was.
And I don't picture, you know, detective Billy Bob wanting to go to work in the building department once we take it away.
Yes.
So. And I don't wanna not fund somebody that's been there either.
With the changes in the laws, a lot of guys who might have tried to go a little longer are kind of saying, okay, how many, how, how soon do I get to retire now?
I understand that.
Upcoming issues there.
So there's the other thing is, is that if you transfer somebody over, whoever starts, a lot of your, a lot of your officers get overtime.
Right.
And that's not gonna be the case in this situation.
No. Uh, if they did, it would be for a different, it would be to cover patrol stuff and that's, there's a different budget for that. So this would be, uh, like, probably like a ten AM to eight PM type of thing, so that if they have to go make contact in the evening times. Where there's boards or things they had to go to. You know, Monday through Thursday would probably be their schedule and they would have to worry about weekends. Unless it's covering patrol stuff or other things, which, which would actually help the sheriff's office.
In your eyes, they're gonna be thinking it's not gonna be a step one through three. It's gonna be somebody who's probably been there a few years. So you figure it starts out at twenty-six, they're probably already making thirty, close to thirty right now.
It might be, might be close to being talked to.
Or even closer. So you have someone in mind, huh?
Uh, I have a few people in mind. The experience is invaluable sometimes, paying a little bit more money for the right person to do it. As opposed to just taking, well, it'd be cheaper if we went this route. And then in six months, the complaints are flying in. Because the person's not working out. I think experience.
You have a couple of people in mind. I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but since you're in here.
Yep.
In our sheriffism, and you have a couple of people in mind, is this your baby?
Uh, so far it's been, but I have brought the sheriff involved in on, you know.
You think it's your baby.
So my, my initial position was that this would be separate, not a commissioned position. The more that the sheriff and I talked about, like, hey, you know, you really need somebody with experience. You need, uh, somebody with the full authority, somebody that's been through. Uh, maybe not this exact process, but maybe processes.
My worry, my worry with putting somebody in there was putting in Joe Blow civilian.
Right.
Handing him authority and telling him to not use that authority. I thought that was very dangerous.
So we.
So.
Yeah, law enforcement.
Trained is a, is a big change.
Yeah, law enforcement, um, you know, we have a lot of people that come to us. You think I'd be a good cop? You know, I wanna, wanna be a cop. Can I do it? Um, and there's a long process and there's all the stuff that they have to go through for hiring. And they go through an academy. They're challenged at the academy at any point in time. If something doesn't work at the academy, they can release them from that. Then we put them through an FTO process, which is where they go out with a field training officer. They go through the stuff. They have to demonstrate that they know how to do the job. Then they're put on the road by themselves and they're monitored pretty well. And they still have a probation of one year period from that. And if there's anything that comes up in that period of time. You know, it's, it's pretty easy to get rid of them during that first initial stage. So these are people that have been challenged. They've gone through, they've shown this different, you know, the skills that they can do these things.
So how do we ensure if we. Create the position in the sheriff's office and the position is funded for that, that, that person is, that's what they're actually doing? Because again, it's back to the oversight.
And that's.
I mean, because we can't, like, we don't, I, you know, we obviously go through the budget process every year. We fund positions. We have no, you know, I have no, you know, we fund so many road deputies, so many this, so many that. We don't have any oversight over they actually get used in those.
Yeah, I can see in the budget that, you know, Randy is, you know, so much for deputy and so much for marine.
Right.
I know, but I, I don't know how many hours he's there.
Right.
And so it comes back to the, I'm not anticipating a problem, but then when there, if, if there was a problem and the public's saying. Hey, we can't, we keep calling, they're not doing anything. Well, we had a, we had an emergency and we were using the person on this. Or we were using on that and we, because, you know, we're all, because we are, it's a big county. It's a very sparsely, you know, it's sparsely. Pop, people are spread out and we do have, you know, public safety emergencies. And it's very easy to, people get diverted and, and then, and we would have zero oversight over that.
So my, my concern with that was if we had, um.
See, other people aren't listening to.
Yeah, so my concern with that is if we had a, um. If we were to take that on and then it's, you know, say a year down the road, oh, we, we don't have enough people to fill that possession. So we're gonna have the regular deputies handle these complaints. The deputies are already extremely busy as it is. So literally, it's okay, I go take the complaint. Well, here's your ticket, you know, and that's, that was not the direction that we wanted this to go. Is that there needs to be gaining compliance and things of that nature first. So that's where I came up with the idea, instead of a deputy doing this, a unitary position, meaning that it's a detective. That does it because they're not part of regular patrol. Is there a chance that we're gonna have a homicide and everybody else is busy? They're gonna have to do it? Yes, that is always the risk in our job is we have to balance all of the, all of the needs of the public. That is a specific need, that, you know, the code compliance issues, the nuisance issues, those are very specific. And so it would be a specific position where the patrol deputies, somebody would call in and say, there, here's what's going on. Excellent. They write up something up and they send it to that detective. So that would require the detective sergeant really making sure that, hey, you know, this, this is not in the purview of that detective to do. He's got his own assignment. And we've done things like that before. We had, um, uh, we were just getting absolutely inundated with civil, uh, civil papers. So they took us, they took a deputy and moved him in there. And that's all that deputy did. They didn't handle calls. They didn't make traffic stops. All they did was civil papers because they were doing in excess of, I think, like a thousand civil papers over a year's time. Which doesn't seem like a lot of the big picture, but, you know, when you have to drive from this end of the county to that end of the county and you're trying to get all this stuff in.
There any way we can be assured that posse will not be involved? As a ride along or, uh, because that's not gonna go well in the community.
I'm, I'm sure I could talk to the sheriff about that, about maybe getting a policy where the, the posse's not involved in that side. I, I see the posse as a benefit, though. So if there was, if there was a time, like, I think somebody brought up about somebody that wanted to clean up their property that couldn't afford to. And I suggested that maybe that would be a good volunteer opportunity for some of the posse members.
Right, and I have no problem with that. I'm talking about actually going out and making contact with the.
No, it would need to be a detective.
Right.
That's, that's doing, it would need to be somebody, um, doing the initial stuff. We don't, I mean, there's no calls that we send a posse. To go do an initial contact anyways. The posse only assists if there's things that we need. And we've had, you know, we've had various things where it's like, hey, let's get some volunteers together. And then we bring those volunteers in, but it's a, there's, the main person is the deputy or the detective for whatever the position may be.
Keep in mind you're dealing with a workforce that's represented. You cannot make these decisions laterally with the representative workforce. To bring them to the table and get their agreement to vastly expand their work duties. Uh, to include responding to, uh, civil, uh, issues of like law compliance. In addition, the board needs to keep track of the fact that commission law enforcement under a much more restrictive, restrictive ability. Interact with the public than a non-commissioned civilian and whatnot. Well, under existing statutory framework and case law. And it's clear the trend of the legislature is to further constrain, uh, that ability. Uh, so some of the laws taking effect Monday would, uh. But it's gonna be a reorientation of whoever is selected to take this position. It's gonna have to basically forget all their law enforcement training on how to do this job. They're still gonna be under the limitations of how they can interact. They can't just go on. People's, uh, generally, they're not gonna be able to interact to the degree that's building kept. Because they have the ability to pride someone if they're over the grade, so they're under greater restrictions.
And I wouldn't bargain this separately from the general bargaining we're gonna be doing early in September. I mean, I wouldn't approach the union with a single issue thirty days before you approach them with.
The whole thing.
Whole thing, right. What they may not do it to would be to our advantage. So I wouldn't formally commit to it till after your negotiations.
Great point.
Yeah.
Speed boat, another speed boat. There's always unintended consequences. Even when you're trying to do the right.
The thing that I'm worried about, if it's a commissioned officer on top of all that, is, is that when you're looking at. Every day you have to use your discretion on what's most important. Where will this fit ever on that line of what's most important, these type of things versus what they're dealing with? And, and I know what our detectives deal with all the time. And I can easily see that person being like, okay, I'm gonna take it. I'm gonna write it and then I'm gonna farm it off to Mochi to go deal with it. And then once she gets it all done, she'll send it back to me and I'll write it something else, which is exactly what Mochi said she didn't want. When, when we started into this conversation, my goal was that this was a facilitation position that can help people become. In compliance with code or get as close to potential compliance as possible, that make the neighbors happy and, and the community okay. And it's time consuming if you're doing it right. Using a commissioned officer who we spent this much time, effort, money, training and getting them to that point.
And they're gonna be under one set, it sounds like anyway, they're gonna be under one set of rules when they're doing this and another set of rules when they're out on the street.
Yeah, and how do you take one hat off and put another one on?
It's difficult. It is really difficult.
Well, I'm not even sure that they actually ever can take the other hat off. I, I don't know. I think if you're. So it's like you're, you're actually working under that hat all the time. Those rules, period.
And then you're showing.
That might be back to having a discussion with the sheriff about maybe commissioned is not, uh, because of that.
Right. And then the other question is, if it's under the commissioners, who's gonna be their manager? Is it gonna be the three of us? Or is it underneath the clerk of the board? I mean, you know, where would that sit? You know what I mean?
Well, you also have to figure out where's their office based.
You can find it in the spot. Go ahead, go ahead, Rebecca.
Sorry, since we're on the subject of discretion, a little bit of, um. An issue that I talked at length with the, a deputy prosecutor over in Chelan about is, um. The discretion when calls or complaints come in, because we're talking about all code violations here. So someone has a house, you know, two feet over versus the property that's spewing with trash, leaking septic. There's a level of discretion that's exercised before, um, the matter is even pursued, uh, further. And farmed out to the other departments to work with that appointed individual, the code compliance officer. So, um, one of the, I wouldn't say issues Shalan has been having, but one of the, um. The things they have been working on extensively is. Training when to pursue complaints and when not to. But that discretion until it's, um. Is in the sheriff's office, it's their discretion, whether they choose not to pursue a complaint or they choose to pursue it. They have full autonomy at that point, um, to do so. they have full autonomy at that point, um, to do so, and so that's been one of the issues they've been working through with this change. Um, so the hearing, let's say they have a hearings examiner, but the board, when something gets referred for what type of formal action should be taken, um, you know, there's checks and balances at that point, but before that, that discretion is really with the, the sheriff's office at this point.
Okay.
That is a conservative, I think. And that discretion will be overseen by one individual, but whereas the board takes three on staggered electoral terms, so it's much more likely to get a consistency in even application. It can be radical shift from one personality to another, the next sheriff could very well want nothing to do with this.
Cause that, that is something that's. Brings up, because you never know if the next sheriff wants to enforce these things, but not these things, and there's nothing we can do about that.
So I will say, you know, when, when we first came on board, January, February, we were not looking at code compliance violations, we were underneath this thing, we had some issues come in with septic, um, and so I got involved and talked to the landowners, um, another one was with the land that was potentially could landslide into another property and, and when a commissioner calls, um, people seem to like, well, I'm jump on board and, and help and it went, you know, all went really smoothly, where sometimes, you know, staff, you just get roadblock after roadblock. And if it's underneath us, then whenever they're having an issue, they can come to us, whoever's district it is or whoever, and ask us to have a conversation with the people as well. That, that can be a benefit, it's just gonna be more work and more time and more effort, more oversight on our part, it's not like we don't have enough to do anyways. So, just food for thought.
Yeah, I guess I'd say, why doesn't this model work, but only by, like, uh, you know, coming into this, when we started, again, I like the, the law enforcement piece as far as for those difficult people, but I do, you know, my thought was that we don't really change things a whole lot, other than we have a code compliance department and they, we hire a person and they work directly for the board. It's more work for us, cause now we're managing another person. And they're that person, and they go and do that, and they also, they, they, you know, interact with the, um, the departments that are the, the, um, subject matter experts, when it's something that they do, except it being under a director, they're under the board of commissioners. Also, and they're, and I'm assuming in the past, there has been interactions with law enforcement when it's been appropriate, when we've had the, I know the, you know, previous, you know, code compliance officers, sometimes they would coordinate with law enforcement, cause they, they had to go out on site, and this has been a really, this is the bad folks and, um, and that worked, where they would, you know, they only use that when they had to. The, the piece where I think we've had a problem is more with the, uh, making sure that we're following all the steps and doing the processes right, so that we can get to that when we end up upstairs asking for something that there's, um, that everything is up to snuff, so that it, uh, we don't have any legal problems, and it's like, oh, that's thrown out, cause you didn't check this box, and, um, it just moves, the difficulty is that we're back to, we have to hire somebody that's got all these wonderful characteristics and they work for us.
So.
I mean, that's, I don't wanna, I mean, cause I don't want it, but it is, it is our responsibility, I mean, it really is, we're, this is something we're, we're supposed to be doing, and, um, and in a sense, in the past, it's been, the board had it, cause code compliance, this is not something that dates back into the eighteen hundreds, this was in the last twenty years, that, or twenty-five years, that they've been doing, and, and it was, it's, it was housed in the building department from the beginning, just because that's where it was, there's no reason.
Short straw.
Exactly.
Are you calling her short?
No. No, but her predecessor was, I probably was here when that happened, and.
He was.
He was, and.
He's part of E and Tim O'Neill and.
Right.
Whoever else at the time are the ones that worked through.
But it worked through it, and so. But it was, I'm sure, thinking back, it was, the board was like, well, cause I'm sure there was discussion then about this position being a standalone position, that was another department that answered to the board, and it's like, uh, Lord, no, let's. You raised first, didn't you?
We were close, you were close second. I, I would go so far as to say we were talking about making it a somehow temporary type of position under the sheriff. Under us, that's easy. You know, we could, we could give it a trial run for a year under us and say, yeah, no, uh, this isn't working and, and reevaluate. So that eliminates that potential issue.
Go ahead.
So it, we also have another one, is rather than just being underneath us, we could do the same thing we did with Jen, we could put it under Rob, in that department.
Why do you think he's here?
To say no. If you're not at the, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So, so, but that's, that's an option, but I do, I mean, if we, if we do do that, remember, I always started with, I want this to be a facilitation position, I think facilitation. Each department does a great job facilitating, we have the pre-application conferences and all that, but, but from what I've heard, people don't feel like, we do a good job individually of supporting people, you know, through the process for their individual part of the process, but when you come in for some, whether it be a CUP or, or just a development or something, and it's your first time, it's a daunting process. And I see this position as not only doing the code compliance code enforcement, but could also be the one that can help shepherd people through the process and be that single point of contact, when you have questions and all that, that's how I originally envisioned it. And the more, you know, I think about it, that, that would be great, and we could do it underneath us for a year, and if, if it's working out great, great, if it's like they need more support, we could stick it under Rob. If they're dealing with a lot more on the nasty side, then we could shove it over to the sheriff's department. But at least then we have a little bit of control of it for a while, and then we can move it where it needs to go.
The negative if it's under us is we're automatically the bad guys on everything that didn't get nuisance abated within a week. Um, the commissioners are evil.
We already.
We already.
But I think we need to have that under us, and we need to have that responsibility, and I think that, um, it, it would allow us to have a closer working relationship with that compliance officer, so they know where we are at any given time, um, and it would also help us, um, have control over that position, including in the hiring process, to make sure we get that facilitator, uh, that we're looking for.
And the other thing is, is when it comes to discretion, we have a hundred and seventy, hundred and seventy cases currently open, and whoever we hire has a big backlog, and if it's underneath us, we can set the priority on which ones you were.
That's where I'm leaning for temporarily, I'm not giving up on the sheriff's department idea, or doing it back to Lynn, but, I, I think we need to have control and new recital.
I've given up on the thought of giving it back to Lynn.
Oh, I still wanna hold that over for a little while.
No.
So we still gotta start working on the language, the amendments, all the changes, we just really needed the direction for Rebecca and I and whoever else is involved on how we're gonna start.
Well, I wanna look at fees too, and make sure.
We, we've been talking about the fees.
A hundred dollar fine to somebody is monstrous, but to somebody else, that's chump change, I'll do that every Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in a speeding ticket, you have a stepped up, don't you, where eventually you don't have a license anymore.
But your insurance will change, so the more, if you gotta take it every week, then.
I don't think Jeff Bezos is our cook, or is our beaten issue, but, or Jake Bezos' life, yeah.
I, I could afford to deal with more nuisance than you.
So we can't have some stepped up fineage that, you know, on your fourth offense, it's.
Cause we talked about that, and it really is, it's this, you know.
You already have that, where there's increasing infraction costs.
Right, we just have not utilized it, because, again, the process has to.
I would like to, to look at with them. Um, look at where we can go and how far we can go, and it doesn't mean we have to get to level ten, but with some people, you might have to get to level ten.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have consensus about the, the big question of, we keep it, I, I, again, that's where I started, but then I was willing, if others were. Um, so it would be a, it would be, uh, an employee, it'd be under the commissioners. So we would obviously hire them. And they would be the facilitator and work with, which includes, is planning, L, uh, building, law enforcement. Everything, really.
I think the other good thing is, is if it's underneath our direct supervision, what we're telling the community is, we are taking this seriously.
Yeah, cause we have to do something, we are, it is unacceptable that we have, but I think one of the, this person, whoever this person is, is that we're gonna have to sit down and look at those hundred and seventy cases and have a hard conversation about, and, and go back to the folks that filed and said, you know, some of these, I'm sorry, they're, they're, we have limited resources and this is just not, we, you know, and I frankly, from my interactions with folks, some, and I, I, you know, I've seen the list of hundred and seventy, I'm not gonna pick any of them out, but I would say going forward, part of the control is, things shouldn't get put on a list. Is that we have set unrealistic expectations of people, and, and you witnessed it in Lyle at that, where it's like I had to have, that's the conversation that needs to happen, we are not going to go in and tell people that to cut their grass and limb their trees up, I'm sympathetic, I don't have that kind of authority, I don't believe we do. And it's the easy thing to say is like, you know, file, file a complaint, we'll look at it, no. Manage it upfront and just tell them, I can't stop you from filing, go ahead, but that's not gonna go anywhere, because that's not something that we have the resources to take care of. We have to put our resources towards, you know, raw sewage running down the ditch.
And that's, we have to train our guy to have priorities.
Right, and that's.
Poor girl, sorry.
Poor girl, could be, we've had some really good girls at that. Sorry, sorry, thank you.
Thank you for keeping me politically correct.
Yes, gender neutral language, people.
So should we bring Rob in, cause we're looking at changing job classification?
Yeah.
So are you thinking it should be me, Rebecca and Rob? Do you still wanna be involved, I mean?
Whatever you guys need.
Do you see any issue with, right, cause that's gonna be, cause we are gonna pull, we can pull the language from the existing position, but I think it's, this is a little different to.
We write it and run through the classification committee for you too, and assign it to wherever it's gonna go.
My bar's number isn't all valid to school.
Right.
You know, shift from here to here.
Understanding the dollar figures that are in your budget.
That brings up a whole other question, is this, uh, code facilitator gonna have to be in charge of their own budget processing and, and be a semi-accountant as well now? Or are we gonna give them a little help on that?
Who's we?
We are the boss of that person.
I know, but we don't, I don't do any accounting for anybody else.
I know.
We have people then.
They're not gonna have people, is.
You'll figure that out, yeah, no, good, good point, as far as, yeah, that's, yeah, no, we're better, and then.
Description that you have to understand, Kianta?
Uh, I think the other, the other thing that we need to have consolidated agreement is, is we are not talking about nuisance here, we're talking about all code compliance, and this is going to be a code compliance.
Right, I agree.
And, and what we'll do is, is we'll take, out of the, out of the county code, we'll take all the code compliance sections and put it in one section, so that for the public, it's easy to understand that this is code compliance, this is this, its own title for code compliance, and these are the fines and fees and everything, and how to get through it and make it user, as user friendly as this government can.
Right, and hopefully get something on a webpage on there too, so it can be online and easy to access for people.
Good thing about the fiscal party is, when we're rebuilding a new budget, it'd be a good time to add a new department or move stuff to where it's gonna go, and natural time to do all of it.
And whether this person's gonna have administrative support, uh, or resources.
Right.
You already have the two.
You need to look at job descriptions, reclassification for an existing position, includes this in the job description, and their classification status is based on that responsibility. Since that's been removed, they need to evaluate that.
It's always so easy.
How do we all enough our farm to plan today, by the way?
Yeah, that is bizarre.
I almost picked red, then it would've.
It's coming, it's coming with the change.
That's the only reason I.
I have a feeling I'll find a few vehicles.
And we're taking a nice vehicle since you're getting a position.
I only have two right now, cause I'm still waiting on my replacements, so next year's potential.
Yeah, when the person comes on board, they get the nice new replacement.
I think it's that one. You can get the Colorado or the SUV, but.
So we, we might have a fleet by then, so we won't have to worry about giving that person a vehicle. We'll have a fleet to choose from.
Okay, okay. Rebecca, do you have any questions for my seatmates, since you and I are gonna have to be moving on this?
No, I think, um, you know, we, the Chelan title, which is its own, uh, regarding enforcement, is pretty and probably a good starting point, I'm gonna look around at other counties before we meet again. But they definitely have it set up, regardless of where it sits, their setup is that there is this one, uh, point person, and they work with the various departments, but they also have the ability to do liens, infractions, nuisance abatements. All those options are put in the single titles, so that, um, folks know when they start this process, what they're looking at if they don't comply. And I think that should hopefully, you know, encourage people when this comes up to, to take care of the issues, um, but I think, you know, Chelan has some good starting language that I can bring to you and we can work with, and I'll look for other counties as well.
So then the, the last one I have on that is, is that in the current code, we have a nuisance board of appeals.
In the current, current or the one we made?
Uh, the current, the one that just got pulled, the nuisance board of appeals is, it's, it's something that's underneath us to appoint people to. Most of the people that are on it have never had a meeting that I know of. Do we want to keep that, or if it's underneath us, the, the appeals come to us and we make the decision.
What, what was its function, yeah, it's never been used in my career here.
Currently not been utilized, but the purpose behind it was if someone thought they were being unfairly treated, when we said you have to clean up this stuff.
So that is the, that's the appeal of the board. So like, it comes to us and the board says, yeah, we authorize abatement, and that, so that was their appeal step?
No, it went, before it went to us, it could go to that, that board. In essence, it's giving citizen oversight over the, the county employee for their decision.
Is that our role?
Well, that was my question, how should we?
It was taking stuff off our plate, is what it was doing.
But it was only, it, you mean, they would have to appeal it, it's so many days of us going and saying, this is a whole bunch of trash. Or, from my understanding, if you ruled that yesterday is trash, they could still go to the nuisance board and say, well, I don't agree with them, and then the nuisance board would say yes.
Could overrule the board of commissioners.
I don't know, I mean, I've never used.
That sounds unlikely.
It's going the other way.
Nuisance board to us, but hopefully the nuisance.
Yeah, I would think they would be an interim staff, just jumped to the final.
In the whole time I've worked there, it's never ever been.
I was gonna say, I don't.
Okay.
That's really convenient for.
Rebecca, did you have a comment on that?
I was just gonna say, I think that's right, it would be appealed to the nuisance board and then to you gentlemen. Um, you know, Chelan has a process of it gets appealed to their hearing examiner, which they have, and then to a lupa, and then to superior court, so there's these, um, avenues of people are not happy with the decision to, um, to appeal, and so that's what's been done up there, but I believe that's where the nuisance board came in, I don't think it's ever been utilized that I've seen. I don't think it's ever been utilized that I've seen, um, either.
No, generally it comes. Bring it to us.
The other thing we have to figure out is training, how do we train somebody for this? But that's a mountain road issue.
That's Rob's problem.
Well, they're gonna need training from her and from him and really from him.
Which I think is probably gonna be something that's really great is, is if, if they go spend some time in each one of these departments, then they're gonna be a better facilitator. For the things that come in. And, and it'll be a nice process if we can keep them long enough to take it and become, you know. Effective, truly effective.
Okay.
Anything else Rebecca, that you have questions that, to make it easier on us when we're drafting?
Nope, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca for all your work on this.
Yes, one comment.
So Lena and I had this discussion. I actually approached her. If this code compliance officer is going to transfer out of the building department. In a new building, I'd like to take that office from my senior planner.
Wow, first up.
She won't have adequate space. Um, and since we're all in one centralized area, it makes sense.
Is this for? Is this for the long range planner position?
We didn't have that position.
So right now I have to put this new person or anyone of my planner even storage.
I'm going for a two recording fifteen minutes and orders an office.
Yeah. No, I mean, that makes sense because. If we're pulling it out of the building department, you guys share space.
Right.
Yeah, that, that make total sense.
And it's already set up as an office.
Right.
So why couldn't.
It's already in the shared space between the two departments.
So then we have to find a spot for this person.
We are. But if they're under the commissioner, they can have mine. I'll work out of my car. I don't have any room either.
You could set up a tent on the roof.
Yeah, tent on the roof.
Well, I hear there's. WSU extension.
Yeah, go with Gordy, go find it, go, go find us a space for the. It's brand new. We're not even done. We are out of room.
Yeah, I was gonna say those offices might have should have been built a little smaller so you can give an extra one or two each one.
We have other things.
Can you get your donut, Mr. Tim? Just know everybody liked maple worse.
Alright, well, I think we have a direction on that.
It seems so easy, such an easy topic to fix when you get an email that, you know, they know how to fix it. By paragraphs.
Oh, you know, you read that.
And we have trouble doing it, so.
Lynn gives up something, gets a new car and Mochi gets a new office. I'm thinking those two go out of negotiation.
Yeah, I'm thinking there was some.
My new car's on order. I just don't know if it's gonna come this year or not. It just now got a bid number assigned.
Okay, alright, well, we will move on.
I know, but he's like, I don't know when you're gonna.
Hi Brenda, good morning. Okay, go ahead. Come on up. We're still gonna continue. No, 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 we're, cause we're all, we're all worried. We have, we still have short-term rentals.
So, this'll be short. Suzie, Suzie, our audit lead, she wants to know if you, if the board. Wants an official entrance conference this year. Uh, with the database delays, it might be best to skip the entrance conference, cause it wouldn't be able to hold one till the first or second week in August. Leaving us roughly a month left on the audit because they bumped it out a couple of weeks because of this. So it won't be done the end of August, probably middle of September. She's asking that I speak with the board and know what you wanna do. And then if you decide to skip the entrance, they will provide. The normal packet that they provide. A little history on this is, we had a little glitch trying to get. To do the closing roll. So we had all of the information and the data and then we had. Okay, so the person that needed to upload the data is no longer with us. And the other person that was designated wasn't here and there was some miscommunication. So now there's some difficulty. With a new server communicating, trying to get the data to them, our financial data. So that's what we said.
Um, could you, for the benefit of my, my seatmates, maybe explain what the, what the. What the entrance conference is and what is, I'm fine with skipping it.
Well, and that's what I wondered with the new board.
Yeah.
Usually they come in or they're virtual depending, um, and they announce who they are and what they do and the purpose of their audit. Which is all explained in the paper packet, the packet that they usually just read.
Read to us.
Yeah, and give you the cost of the audit, the estimated cost and, um. And where the areas are going to be covering. We've already expanded, in my opinion, a couple of the areas they told me to originally that they were going to be covering. So, um.
What areas are those?
Grants. They were just gonna do the COVID grant. Then they did a highway planning grant that was fine. And now they're on seniors, which. There's a lot of questions on that one. I don't know if they're covering all the, all of the COVID grants or just the main grant or I, I. Yeah, because anyway, so, um, that's how it is. And then they tell you what they're. The areas are going to cover, which is also in all the paperwork that comes, right? Dave, I mean, yeah, tell me if I'm off base. And, uh, and the length, how long they anticipate being here, which that just changed last week.
So it's basically, apparently it's set up assuming that the board is illiterate. So.
Pretty much.
Go ahead, my email is D is.
What's illiterate mean?
I hate people just showing up reading.
But they do interact with some questions. Interactions. So I just don't know what, what direction, um. I got this email yesterday at three thirty and I thought, perfect, the board's gonna be here tomorrow. So.
I, I'm, I'm fine with.
I, yeah.
I mean, it's already underway. I mean, an entrance should be at the beginning.
And usually it's within two weeks of when, um. The audit, when they actually start doing their work and they've received their data and some other things.
Yeah, so I think, I think we're good.
Just skip it, get the information and get it to you.
Spend your time keeping us out of trouble.
Yeah.
I am actually working on the budget worksheet. So that's, I stopped doing that to come down here and take care of this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please, I, I mean no disrespect to the state auditor.
Oh, I know that.
If they're listening.
If, if they're listening, there's doughnut.
There's doughnut.
Okay, thank you. I'm out. Back to your RVs and whatever.
Short-term rent, do we wanna take short-term rental or RV? This, this was really a, grew out of the, the workshops you folks have been having, so. While I get a doughnut. Start talking. So you pick, you pick a topic, one of the easy.
Make it easy, what? Yeah, there's one of those on this.
Yeah, there's, there's no, no easy one.
Well, they took the last one, you were late.
He, he was only supposed to take a. So, so with Rebecca and I working on code compliance, I think we can all agree that is most important.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we need to get back to it and we need to, we need to get somebody hired. The RV and the short-term rental ordinances are supposed to make that person's job easier. Uh, but it's not gonna be easier if we keep having more and more complaints come in and nobody there. Um, I don't know, um, what Rebecca, but she only has and only has so much bandwidth. To work on these things. She did a great job, um, getting the comments on all of this, the, the drafts that we drafted up. Um, we've got a long ways to go. I think it's gonna take a little bit longer. Um, the, I just heard this morning that the city white salmon just passed a moratorium on any new short-term rentals within city limits.
Really?
Just what I said.
Why, why is there?
The city council did it last night. Um, I don't know if it was on the agenda or what.
Are they thinking that short-term rentals are part of the reason it's driving the cost?
Right, because people just aren't living there? They're just non-stop renting their house or?
I don't, I don't know. I wasn't at the meeting. Um, I just got the email. Um, my first thought is, is. It'll be interesting to see this play out. Um, the mayor did say though, that those who already have it are grandfathered in and, and as long as they are. As long as they've actually applied for their, um, registration. And then they're gonna give like a three-week little leeway, but I mean, with that going on over there, cause that's where most short-term rentals are anyways. I'd say we, we let the city kind of work through.
Well, we have short-term rentals on this side that we absolutely love because they actually bring tourists to our side of the county, so.
Well, I was reading the same Facebook page you were and some people are saying tourists are good. Some people are saying tourists are bad and gold bell.
There is that on that page, yes.
Looking at a substantial impact on the community. I, I've lived in Hood River for years and at that time, I lived on downtown on Columbia Street. All my neighbors were short-term rentals and it was just awful. They would come on the weekends, have these raging parties. Be rude to the neighbors, leave trash and then leave, treated like a orphaned hotel. And when the city cracked down on that, it made a huge difference in the quality of life where the people actually live there. There, there was families that began renting the places. There was kids, um, that were in the neighborhood. The, the schools started getting more people. It was a wonderful, romantic neighborhood. It was actually a community at that point.
Well, I guess I would have a question for you. If the state has essentially legalized short-term rentals. Can we illegal, make them illegal or is that?
Uh, there have been some challenges, um, nationwide on, on some penalty ability, short-term rentals. Most of them have been upheld. They, they need to be. Reasonable, there needs to be, uh, a notice, but, uh, there is the ability to restrict short-term rentals. It's not blanket, uh, and we need to do some further inquiry as to, you know, the parameters, what's being considered to vet, vet it, but. You know, as a starting point, it, it is, there, there are legal ways to restrict those short-term rentals.
Well, if, if we want to restrict short-term rentals or, or not. Right now we are because essentially everything in this county, as far as I'm in, under the interpretation is illegal.
So.
If we want to restrict it or not work on it or whatever, we can also. Break the county up into pieces, uh, because what's good for one is not necessarily good for the other.
And you know, the gorge commission did that based on zoning designations. Uh, and the gorge commission's pretty much shut down short-term rentals in anything but like a five, five acre lots, just random. I don't know why they picked that. Um, but some, some interesting locations, you know. And then when we look at, you know, the, the question that we talked about, whatever, Monday, yesterday, whatever day it was. On, uh, this.
Every day's Monday.
Yeah, this week, yeah. Uh, was, was whether, you know, because Mochi is, is brought up that anything we do at short-term rentals will affect the code. So we'll have to open zoning code. And so Rebecca's looking into, like, if it's. One family in there or another family, it's still a single-family dwelling and still a single-family residence. Would we need to open up the zoning code? To even do it. And so Rebecca's looking into that to see what others, because I don't think this community county opened the zoning code when they did their short-term rental ordinance. So I don't, you know.
So I, I'm not looking to. Make short-term rentals illegal and I, if, if we don't have an option for them, then this code facilitator we're. Hiring is gonna get called, um, you know, because the neighbors renting their house and. That's just, uh, again, let's get into private property rights. If you wanna rent your damn house or your house. But if we are gonna do some, not allowed in some parts of the county, um, let's not just blanket that across the whole county.
Well, I'd say for me, I mean, there is, there's some policy discussion needs to be had on this because I think there is some, we do. I, I'm not taking a position restricting, you know, outlawing them or having them have everything just be wide open too, because we do. We do manage, we plan, that's what the zoning code is, is for. You know, we've thought through what's the, what people want in a given area. Their, their neighborhood to look like. And there's a reason we don't, so we, in some sense, I'm a big advocate of private property rights. But we do restrict, you know, you can't, you know, we have density, we have different things that you can't. And the whole point of that is that that's, it's not a good fit in the community for what we want it to look like. And so. The argument, and I don't know about white salmons, my, my point of view is just from watching the. Discussions in Hood River City over the need to restrict was, but. There was the community benefit part as far as that the people, you know, you have all these. Transitory people, it's not really a community if it's just, uh, uh, a bunch of hotels together. But it also was around the issue with the cost of a housing that the, the. What they were, part of what they were trying to get at too was. The housing stock, some of it's just tied up in short-term rental, but it's not available for just ordinary families to rent. And so they were trying to find some kind of balance, which it's not no, it's just, it's not. Wide open. So they throttled things back. And I think, and I think they did do same thing where they, they had a, they set. You know, basically how much and then no more over this and the people that were already in legitimately are in. And then up to whatever that level was.
As I said, if you, if you were permitting X number in. The white salmon reason, in the BZ region, in the trout lake region and the, in, in breaking it up like that, I have no issues. And I can fully understand where, where short-term rentals becomes a bigger problem. Uh, the closer you get to white salmon or the closer you get to trout lake or, um, I get it, but just because they're there. Doesn't mean somebody shouldn't be able to have a short-term rental in the middle of Centerville. You know, it, it's unlike what the prosecutor's saying. You're not dealing with a neighborhood full of short-term rental. You know, um, and yeah, if you wanna set a number, uh, to geographical regions.
That's what Ben did. The city of Ben did that. They said there're gonna be so many short-term rentals per square mile.
That makes sense to me.
I mean, I see it as the same, the first come, the first people in have the benefit and they're grandfathered in and then the last people are shut out and then.
Right. And that's. But that keeps it from becoming the whole neighborhood. But again, even then, I think you're. I guess that would work because even if you had, I mean, if you're looking at the white salmon side within a square mile, you might have.
More transport.
I see that, you're ready. Come on a field trip.
You might have a hundred houses in that square mile over there where over here you've got three. So what's the chances all three of them want to be a short-term rental?
I mean, I don't, and, and I don't see any diff, I mean, it's a similar issue to ADUs when we were, you know, when the county was first discussing it. We did a pilot, there was all this. Everybody worried because they took the entire county and said, oh, you're doubling the density and that will create. Twelve thousand new ADUs across the county and we haven't planned for that. How can you do that? It's like. Okay, we, we also, if you took the whole build out of the, if you took the current zoning and maxed out everything. There would be five hundred million people living here and that's not, when we, when we hit the first million, we'll talk about adjusting things.
I would say if we are gonna set numbers to, um, areas. I mean, that's, that's a worry for me if you're gonna say, you know, whatever, five people per mile or, you know, only forty people in this region or something like that. Because there might be people already doing it that now don't make the list. Um, I think you have to think of some way to say, okay, we have it open or whatever, thirty days, ninety days, whatever else. Uh, and then it's grandfathered why we come up with our numbers. So we can get those people on the books, find out who they are.
So, so my, my first thought is, is, um, city white salmon's a little different than the county proper. I mean, city white salmon, you've got the density, you've got the, the, you know, those things. The first and most important thing is, is we need just a way to register to find out where they're at. That's what the city did. That's what many county did. They did. The first and most important thing is, is we need just a way to register to find out where they're at. That's what the city did. That's what Skamania County did. They did their little pilot for a while and then they start making rules and regulations once you figure it out. Um, you also have to, we also have to take into consideration that we're making a significant amount of money on the lodging tax and we're now handing that out, you know, to continue this um, going. Um, you know, from a health side. Health doesn't care if it's one family in the house or the other family in the house, you know, environmental health. It's the same septic, it's the same water, it doesn't matter. You're not adding density, you're not adding anything. So we, we need to.
How many do you think short term rentals are out there that aren't going through uh, VRBO or something like that that are literally just off the books and we're not giving tax revenue on that?
So either way, you're supposed to still like e- even VRBO, VRBO, last I checked, didn't take the money. So you get the dollars and then you put it into the state where um, Airbnb, they, they take it for you, send it to the state and then the state spends it to us.
Right. I guess I would say my curiosity is how many people are renting their house off the books, not claiming to get his taxes? And do you think actually getting a registration type of a program would increase the number of?
I have no idea, but because we don't know, we can't track that down. Um, but there's, you know, there's not.
Inevitably, there's some.
Some, yeah. Uh, we, you know, like, there's always been like the Columbia Gorge Rentals group, you know, and some of these. Uh, real estate agencies have gotten into property management. Uh, there's Picasso, but Picasso, you know, they're a big, you know, they've got their own website and everything, but they also, you know. Use Airbnb and everything else. And they do, you know, direct rentals, but they turn in their money because they're a big business, you know, so, so as you look at that, it all comes down to your marketing, you know. You don't wanna do the marketing for your, your rentals, so you're gonna use these people.
I don't want to. I don't wanna just leave it the way it is, that it's just not an option for me. I, I don't mind restrictions, um, but I wanna know how many are out there before we make restrictions.
There is quite a significant number of them, um, under economic development. I think we were, I was looking at like a hundred and fifty in the county thereabouts.
Wow.
Um.
Side, if you go and look.
The issue is, it's just so difficult because current, under current regulatory scheme, they gotta go through. Then a new commercial, basically, rate permitting, which is incredibly expensive.
So if you're gonna be legitimate, it's.
Widespread noncompliance.
Right.
Right, right.
It's, you know, it's kinda like you have, that's why you could do rule studies. If everyone's driving seventy miles an hour, then what if we do it with a fifty mile an hour limit? Well, you have.
But how did, how did Skamania County in there, they kinda sidestepped a lot of that?
I'm not sure how they went about it, you know, because.
Cause it was back to the, you know, when we were talking before about the commercial, you know, sprinkler, you know, that you're basically, it's the same as the.
It's still a single family dwelling. It's not a venue.
Right.
Um, venue's a different thing. Um, and then they limited the occupancy based upon the number of bedrooms, that sort of thing. But you know, our understanding, public works understanding, when we have precepts with these people was that I had to look at it as commercial. They don't have to do a conditional use. Now they have to bring the road up. I mean, that was our previous understanding. And then when Jacob asked me to do research, it's like, well, some other areas have just kinda put in some verbiage of. If you need these things, you're not considered a venue, you're not considered commercial. You know, have fire extinguishers and show everybody where the windows are that you can get out of it. The house catches on fire type.
Right.
Approach. Um, is that anything, you know, formal that they said, okay, citing these things, I don't know. I didn't look into it that deeply. Um, I was just kinda doing a brief look to see, okay, what are other areas doing? And it seemed like um, the majority of them, at least for, say like my side of the code, it, a single family is still a single family. You don't have.
Whether they're a week and it, you know, it's this family for this week and it's still a single family.
But then they also had, you know, criteria of it, that's not even, you don't get to have low large groups, you know, this is, it, a three bedroom house is six people maximum or what have you.
Yeah, cause I will say as somebody, you know, that I, I use VRBO or Picasso or whatever, when we, you know, we rent houses, they're just houses. And they're, you know, I, but I'm also not coming with twenty-five of my college buddies and.
Right.
Which, which like Airbnb cracked down on the parties, like they no longer allow gatherings and parties because uh, they got out of hand in San Francisco and LA and so they shut all that down.
Or you just go rent the house and then.
Yeah, then you throw a two hundred person party.
Two hundred person party.
And like what he had to do with, you know, you have these beautiful homes in Hood River and great, you know, now there's a block.
It's a block party.
Well, yeah, a, a block that typically have two, four people at a house. Now there's twenty each one, you know? That's not reasonable either.
Well, and, and I would say it's our zoning, you know, our, our is, it's not, it's predicated on that. It's single family, stable family, and yeah, four people, six people in a house, not twenty.
And some people.
Like so things as far as like road access and fire and all those things, it's not built for that. That's not what it's built for.
And some people have called and asked questions. They may snowbird, you know, in the way and they may go to Arizona.
And I wanna rent out my house.
Yeah, and for that three or four months, I'd like to rent my house out. You know, that's a lot of these people, what they've said, you know, I'm not here all the time. I'd like to make a little money while I'm not there.
Right. I don't wanna be a lawbreaker.
Well, they still rent them, they're just don't.
Exactly.
Give us anything for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess, I mean, we can, we can move, continue moving on this. We, we. Rebecca did some really good work looking at what Lynn and we worked up with regards to that ordinance. I think we need to sit down again and start working through Rebecca's comments. Um, and I'm sure Dave put some. Uh, prosecutor canal put some comments on there as well and, and see where we can get, uh, my thing is, it would be, it would be great to get something on the books. Um, we need to find out if we're gonna have to, to go into the, you know, zoning code. As long as we can, don't have to go into the zoning code, this should be an easy one. Uh, it's fairly, fairly easy, not, not easy, because we're still gonna have to have a public hearing and you're gonna hear people coming out of the woodwork. But, but still, if we can know where they're at, um, charge a little bit and then we can, then we can start monitoring the situation. The, what it comes down to is there's supply and demand and the demand for lodging on the west end of the county in the summer months is ridiculous. All of the Hood River hotels are booked. Uh, if you look like for this weekend, probably on Airbnb, every single one of them is booked. And so the demand is still there and people are still having a hard place to, to stay. Um, when I was on, serving on the, the recreation subcommittee for the Gifford Pitcho and they were doing their analysis on. The number of people that they expect to coming, be coming to the national forests, it is just a graph like this. And instead of creating more campgrounds, they're actually shutting campgrounds down. And the forest services statement is, we expect the private sector off, outside of the, the forest will pick up the demand. Whether they build campgrounds or RV parks or whatever, and more and more people are showing up in their RVs, there's less camping. And like you look at the numbers and, you know, the gorge is in essence considered a de facto national park. And we're just gotta live with it.
Yeah, I'm, but moving forward, we might get public hearings where, you know, like I said, as long as, you know, one corridor. Um, if, if that corridors people show up opposed and we set super restrictions there, that is a countywide restrictions. Because there's different regions here, so.
But you have to remember though, supply and demand, if Hood River shut it down pretty much, the gorge commission just shut it down. If the city of White Salmon is now shutting it down. That demand, somebody will meet the demand and it's only gonna push it out further.
That's perfect.
For Centerville or High Prairie or.
That road or.
Yeah.
But we can use some uh, economic developments and tourism over here.
Sure.
District three is where everybody's staying.
Most of it concentrated around mile and Trout Lake.
By de facto now.
Short term rentals?
Yeah.
Um, trout, the majority is in White Salmon.
Well, I was, I thought outside the city.
Outside.
Oh, outside the city?
Uh, a lot in.
I don't have very much time to go over this.
Yeah.
I think it's proximity to the mountains, to the water.
As I said, if you wanna phase it in regions or whatever, that's fine. I just don't want a one stop approach.
So, so let me add, so either Rebecca or. How, how much can we adjust? I mean, I know, isn't there some, you know, where we have to have equal treatment as far as across, but we. I mean, obviously we have different zoning across the county where we allow certain things in certain areas and not in others. So we should have some ability to uh, tailor the.
Make a regional approach.
A regional approach? I'm, I'm assuming we can do that.
I'm not, I don't think that we've had the time to thoroughly research the issue, but I think that's a pretty safe assumption, but you know, like any land use, it doesn't have to be.
Right. You can't have every use across the whole county. You can't build an industrial.
You know.
Aluminum smelter in my backyard.
Why, why area can treat it different than others based on, you know, population.
Right.
Ask the.
Housing goods, some of the same costs.
Right.
Infrastructure, things like that.
Yeah, as long as we're keeping that open, I'm good.
Okay.
You know, the other, the other big one that we're gonna come across this is when we did the ADU ordinance, uh, it says you're not allowed short term rental. It only has to be long term rentals. Um, I've had a lot of people contact me saying, I want to short term, like the price of my house is so ridiculously high. In order to survive and live here, being a local, I'm going to short term rental my house out.
Would you like to?
Uh, just so that I can afford to live here. And it's gonna be a side job for my wife and the kids. I'm flipping the house every day, but you know. Don't tell anybody my name, but this is what I have to do in order to just continue living here on my salary. And so we're gonna, we're gonna have to come to that bridge as well.
But same deal, that's, that's gonna have to be, that needs to be fixed, but if you have a. A number that you set via region or city or district or mile or whatever. Everybody's gonna be screaming, everybody's gonna put in an ADU and start renting out, but you're gonna have a cap. So when you get to that number cap in that region. You, you put an ADU in and rent it out, you're still illegal.
When I think Mochi, Rebecca and I will have to have some conversations on this too, because amending the ADUs to allow short term, like that might have a, a, a possible significant part on that.
Right. You'd have to, you'd have to really do that whole, because the CIPA, all of that was based on, on long term.
Why would, if, if we have an ADU on my property that my in-laws live in, what would be the difference if they're living in it every day or if I, if they died and I rented it on the weekend? Why is that in the environment?
You're providing a financial incentive to build a ADU when you can get financial.
For people that don't already have one in place, you might be creating a.
Or creating.
Makes sense, no, it makes sense.
Because again, that, we didn't contemplate that every single parcel that people.
Because, yeah, people.
Cause there was not, and we, and that's been borne out. We don't have very many of them and we're five year.
Theoretically, could the. My in-laws run an ADU. If they pass away in ten years and me and my wife wanna move down to a thousand nine hundred square foot house and my house, that's legal, right?
Right now, the way that's set up, if you have an ADU on your property, you cannot use the principal residence or the ADU.
For short term.
Oh, interesting.
You can rent it.
Rented, but not a short term.
Minimum sixty, like two months. If you wanna rent it out for two months.
In two month blocks.
Interesting, alright, learned something.
Yeah.
But the other side of the coin that. Other areas have dealt with as well is in the housing period. You don't wanna also remove housing, you know.
I was gonna say, you, you would.
Buy a house, but need to rent a house because they work and live here. That's also in a shortage, so.
Say, we're dealing with need of housing over here, so.
Right, I mean, there's.
Plus, and I, and I will say that was, you know, the ADU ordinance be, I mean, it was carefully crafted where it was. It was not, and again, that's, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, that's how it was done when it was initially put in. If we wanna contemplate opening that up then, but that's a whole process that we would have to, cause we didn't, we did not, it was for permanent, long term. Housing for either the principal owners in one or the other to downsize, to create, and one of the things we were looking for was more housing stock for permanent residents, not as short term rental.
Over here, I.
So we didn't look at the economic model of generating income from it. Again, I'm not necessarily, I'm saying we would have to look at that.
I don't think anybody over here would build an ADU to rent, but over there, I can see everybody with twenty acres building an ADU to rent it. That's good money.
You're out of the scenic area, you can't. I live in the scenic, I can't do anything, so.
I'm just outside.
Yeah, you're just outside.
Purposely.
Perfect. No, I would, yeah, I, I'm not gonna get on my.
But the thing is, is you know, there are a lot of creative people who put a lot of money into providing the services that people are asking for in the gorge that live in Quikertuck County that are renting. More than one ADU or not ADU, but some, something, whether it's a yurt or a tank or a, uh, you know, chicken coop or whatever. And we're gonna have to deal with that.
But right, well, as I say, I, I don't. I'm fully able to look at the situation, but let's look at situation number one first. Figure out if we're gonna put a population control on it and then see if there's a need to address number two. If there is, right, um.
Right, which I, I like.
But number two needs to be, the number of number two needs to be factored into number one.
But I do really appreciate that you are. You know, having these discussions and working with the departments and um, Rebecca and council, because again, we, as we have found. We may have great ideas and then it's like, eh, we can't, there's a, there's an issue. You can't do that because of this or you're gonna have to. So that we don't waste our time on a solution that we can't actually enact. Or we can enact it, but we have to back up eight steps and do this and then this and then this, otherwise we're, you know, we're breaking the law. So I, I appreciate that, cause I think we can be a lot more fit, cause we are gonna have to deal with this. You are correct. Whether we deal with it or not, it is getting.
It's gonna happen.
It's happening now and that's, that's the whole idea of land use planning is that you try to get ahead of it, plan for whatever it is. So that you don't have chaos and impacts and, and the more. It's, you know, there are, it is inevitable. We are seeing more neighbor to neighbor conflicts because of that, you know, it's not like the old days where.
Everybody was civil to each other?
Well, there's that, but it's also as you get more people and people are using. You know, if you have more transitory people, it's just exponentially, there's the potential for more conflict. Because now it's not, it's not my neighbor living next door that I grew up with, it's been there. And if there's a, you know, they know, oh yeah, he's working nights, I probably shouldn't be out doing this, that would be disrespectful. It's the short term rental, they don't know, they don't care and they're, so then I'm calling Tim and saying, hey, they're, they're being wild over this.
Rental period, whether it's short term or long.
Sure.
Well, sure, that was the one I was gonna bring up. I had somebody call me and they're like, you know, we had this horrible neighbor that was renting this place that was messy and trashy and all this. And they got rid of him and they're STRing it and it's so much better now because that guy's gone.
Sure.
So you know, it can go both ways.
I'm thinking about sixty houses right here locally that'd be perfect for short term.
And somehow I would like it, you know, that we can verify that it's actually been a permitted structure. So we know that it's a safe structure, has proper sanitation. I mean, what's the liability if it's somebody that just threw up a building and it's not safe?
Right.
And it doesn't have a septic, they're just gotta, you know.
All that, that's what that ditch.
High ground, yeah, you know, because then there's, then we're back to the not approved sanitation.
Right.
Then we have a whole bunch of.
People pay extra for just being an outhouse.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Really? Are they really?
I, if, I'm sorry. I mean, there's a big demand for yurts that don't have bathrooms on them.
Can we move on?
Yes, yeah, let's move on.
Before we get too far down the septic hall?
Yeah.
The septic hall.
So to understand that though, there is consensus on going towards some sort of recognition of regulation of ongoing uh, short term use, but taking it outside the pure commercial permitting system.
Yes.
By the same time, that's one of the concerns that there's gotta be, you know, housing that's not about to collapse. That's not just a, you know, imminent danger to potential short term rental. Uh, folks, uh, which, maybe owners or the property owners, but I mean, that's, that's not to the same degree as, you know, improving. Not to the same degree as, you know, improving roads and so forth, that would be on the same standard as existing here, so I think that we can try to figure out a way. To work all that together, uh, there's gotta be some sort of minimal compliance, otherwise, you know, you have buildings in Miami collapsing and bridges collapsing.
Right.
I mean, we, uh, uh, I know people like to complain about all these things, but there's substantially less people die nowadays because of house fires. Because of some of these regulations about, uh, insulation and fire, uh, detectors and all this stuff, I mean, stairs are safer, houses are safer.
Oh yeah, you don't have stairs in there.
Yeah, there's some potential difference, and it could be owners in the pain, and a real pain that could play with, but, uh. You know, the, I don't think anyone in this room is interested in, uh, trying to, unnecessary lim- limit property rights or order regulate. But it's, we have an existing issue that we need to incorporate and make somehow legal and, and safe.
Right.
That right now with the lack of compliance, there's no really to, uh, you know, to bill any interest in safety. So like, like, as I, as I hear, there's a consensus on the board, you'll work toward that goal, is that a fair statement?
Great salesman.
Yes, there is consensus, the conversation we had before that, I don't know if you're involved with, was the things like the, the glamping temps. It's kind of a hot topic right now. But how do we deal?
Well, that's a full commercial item, right?
Right, right, but what if somebody's just putting one of them outside their house? You know, cause there's hip camp and there's a few of these other, you know.
If I wanna put a yurt down by my cattle pond in the back forty acres. You know, that's gotta be permitted, and she's gonna tell me to build a concrete base for it and.
Well, there's existing.
I'm not the engineer, Will.
There's existing structures and, and utilization through short term, and then there's regulation that increased density. And that's where Mochi comes in, that's where the planning department comes in, because, uh, you know, I'm not gonna give a firm penny right now, we need to look into it further. But there's likely gonna be a trigger of the need for environmental review at that point, that doesn't mean you can't do it. It just means that it's gonna be a longer, more expensive process to, um, you know, to get that result that you're looking for.
So, so what you're saying is, is that when it's just a house and all that, eh, you know, and you're, you're switching out one family for another. What's already permitted, that possible, that's easy? When you move to that next step, where you put two or three yurts or whatever on the property, it's moving into the condition. It's, it's moving into the condition.
And it's a greater environmental impact due to a change in the land use regulations, and that in itself can trigger, uh, additional reviews.
So what's the current, back to the earlier thing, it's not like public safety, I mean, we have minimum standard. If I wanna rent my house and it's a fire trap and a, I, I'm assuming I can be. I mean, am I allowed to just rent a shack that the roof leaks and the?
I don't have control over that.
No, no, not that I'm in the need to just get a permit, but the potential, the. Renter would have some recourse, the, whether it's short term or long term.
That goes back.
That we have minimum public help, public safety standards that I.
Call us and say, hey, you know, my landlord won't fix this, my landlord won't fix that, I don't have any control over that. Um, so we just have to let him know that that's more landlord tenant law, and that they would need to seek appropriate.
We hire a fire marshal, which I didn't tell it reaches a degree that they're out of compliance with current, uh, building code that would regulate that, that structure.
Yeah, like if.
Okay.
Something, yeah.
I'm just saying, we must have some, cause we have minimum standards now, things that they should.
Right, but I, I mean, I can't just go into a home and.
No, 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 and I'm not suggesting.
You know, and even with code enforcement, I couldn't just go into somebody's home and say, oh my gosh, you don't have a handrail, you don't have a guard rail. I don't have that authority, you know.
Okay, I mean. So the last one that I can say is, is that I've heard from a lot of people on the west side that are, that, that do have long term rentals. That say, because of this, the, the state rules on, you know, we have people who've been living in places for sixteen months who haven't paid a bill. You know?
Yeah.
And they're like, I'm never doing this again, I'm just gonna short term rental, at least I know I'll get paid. And, and then tenant protection laws, you know, that are changing, they, I mean, we're, we're creating our, digging our own graves. When it comes to some of these things are getting passed at the state level.
I wouldn't say we are, but.
We is a, is a.
Is a society.
Yeah, no, there's gonna be a, uh, a rental debacle here coming real soon, but I don't think the renters understand.
Okay, RVs, something simple. Anybody wanna kick that off, committee? Clerk?
So, so on, when we had our meeting, we were gonna, you know, touch on all this, we spent, we agreed early that. The code enforcement was number one, and that Rebecca only has so much time about this, we're all getting. Uh, and then the question is, is what's the next? And so we kinda talked about what we thought was next most important, I guess it comes down to the two of you. Uh, what do you think, is it short term rentals or is it the RV ordinance, what, what is the next most important that we should deal with? I mean, we're just, we're doing triage here, right, should've been done.
I, I agree, as far as I absolutely, code enforcement is the most critical thing to get taken care of. And then for me, I think we're doing this in the correct order, I would do short term rentals as the, I see the most. And maybe it's my west incentric view of the world, that that's more of a.
Could be lemon, donut, you just made.
Could, could be.
Sugar, no, I agree, RV is.
And Rebecca did give us a copy of Benton County's RV verbiage, I have not had a time to print it out or read it. So it may not hurt.
I would think RVs is gonna be the easiest of the three as well, so.
Rebecca, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I think the biggest question that you guys are going to need to address is. When we allow people to use RVs for temporary, um, ho- home, whether you are allowing it because, um. What constitutes hardship, so Benton Counties is very limited, if you're a caretaker to someone that's ill. Um, if, I think it has temporary workers and two other circumstances, it's very limited, you only get one year permit. And then you can renew it, but you actually have to show proof of the hardship, your medical condition or whatnot. Um, the discussion on Monday was whether we are interested in opening up hardship to be. The lack of affordable housing, and that's going to be a much broader. Broader take as to hardship, um, than other counties are doing, and certainly going to open the door for a lot more. People looking for permits, if the, the criteria is simply, I can't afford to live in the gorge.
I say, there's one of those that I, I don't wanna kick people out of the trailers or staying internally. But if you put some regulation in there like she's saying with the financial hardship, you're gonna start to have people. We're gonna be a destination.
Exactly.
Not your side, my side.
We already are, fly over the county, you can see them everywhere.
Yeah, that's what I said, so it's something I would like to get a handle on what's there without encouraging more.
And we do have hardship provisions in our zoning code before, it's pretty similar to Benton County. We basically replace.
ADU.
Because it ended up, cause before we didn't consider RV as a dwelling, so RV was not a part of that. But we allow for temporary placement of manufacturing home as a hardship dwelling. The deal is they have to remove it when the hardship is no longer there. And it becomes a code compliance issue.
Right.
Because you, you know, you invest so much in putting a spec tape to a well, bringing the structures, through the driveway. At the end of the day, they might still claim that as a hardship dwelling, but the hardship is not the original one anymore.
Right.
And therefore, you know, as a part of the ADU, we took it out.
Right, the dad who you had the hardship over passed away, but now you have the mom. Who is capable but couldn't afford to live.
Afford to live anywhere else, right?
And they're on their fourth trailer and all of the other three are still there.
And I can't permit an RV as a dwelling, because that doesn't have a HUD insignia.
Right.
So I mean, there's.
Well, I, I would, I would suggest, just in given bandwidth issues, let's take things that we can work, that we can. Let's have some successful something, and then.
Say, let's kick this can down the road, right?
I am quoting.
So the other one is, um, uh, the, the tiny house revolution of.
Yeah.
I mean, the tiny house revolution, does that fit under the RVs, does that fit under the ADU? Where do we see this? Because, let's just be honest, anybody in their twenties can't afford to live on the west end of this county. And a lot, and we have a lot of people living in tiny houses, um, that are really nice, insulated. Built, they built them themselves, some of them.
Like a trailer, but less.
But it's prettier, or more eclectic, or, you know, I'm assuming those are all.
I don't see a whole lot of difference between a tiny house and a trailer.
Um, we have a few people who have permitted small houses, like Houston had a couple. Where they've actually permitted them as a structure.
How about the ones that they're like, basically a try, a, a flatbed that they built?
And it would have to be approved through labor and industry.
Okay, which it gets approved through labor and industries, we.
They go to labor and industries.
Right, but they, but you can get the sticker on it, you know, cause you can go buy it that already have the sticker. But the question is, is how do we then treat it to get it so they can use it on their property?
Right, because most of the time they don't have HUD stickers, they have the RV sticker from labor and industry, but not the HUD sticker.
I think you're still gonna have to figure out the septic, you're gonna figure out the water, you're gonna figure out a foundation for it to get it off fire. Cause it was still on the tires, as far as I'm concerned.
And that's what labor and industries has, has determined. Because it's manufactured off site, so then it's a manufactured structure through their factory program. Which is then building code.
Right, so it really is, it's, it's, they don't differentiate between it and my, if I go buy an RV at the.
Right.
Whether I built it myself, I got a RV sticker, so then we're back to the, you know, can people live in an RV?
Unless they went through LNI process to get the HUD sticker, then it would be different, but. Again, that's not me then, that's LNI, and then we do a placement permit if it had the HUD sticker. But we're not allowed to permanent placement permit for just an RV sticker.
So the next one is, is if we're bringing on code compliance, and we have these people living in a tiny house. And they're either staying at a friend's property or they have their own land or something. And they're working here in the gorge at one of these jobs, you know, that all these people, every one of them has a, you know, well, help wanted. Or they're working for one of the, you know, seasonal, uh, yeah, water sport industries or something. We, our code compliance officer comes on board, the neighbor says they have a tiny house over there, go shut them down. Are we going to go out there and have our code compliance and go tell them, you can't live here? Go somewhere else, we don't have any availability in our trailer parks, because that's where you usually put them, is in a trailer park.
Yeah, they're.
Uh, but you, the, you know, the trailer park down there and Benjen, or you know, at the, at the bridge is full all summer long. There's no availability, it's thirteen hundred dollars a month, and you do wanna stay there for the month.
Wasn't the issue just allocating limited resources to ID that code compliance officer?
Right, so we can, we can differentiate, I mean, that goes back to the why we are, we, that's what, here's the priorities and we only have. You know, I said, you, if, if you wanted full compliance with all code on every single thing, it would take ten people. And I've said that and said that you, there's not a house, there's not a parcel, parcel in this county that you couldn't find something out of compliance.
And that's kind of my thing is that I have no problem. Having that person tell whoever's on the phone complaining about something that the commissioners have. Taken this off the nuisance list while they work on a remedy. If we're working on a remedy, I don't want code compliance person out there.
I'd say no.
Just wanted to get that understood, because I know the previous board said, we will not kick people out of the place they're living in. Unless it's under the nuisance and abatement and the property's getting sold.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
So I just wanna have that clear.
To kicking people out of the property they're looking on? Um, they might be on an ADU, I'd be, I'm true. Sorry, my in-laws.
Oh.
But you just, so you know, you said that publicly.
That's fine, they know I love them, kinda.
We never want to say that.
So, that, okay, is that good for, I mean, Rebecca, that gives us some direction and we can, we can start working on these things, um. And, uh.
On the first couple?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you again for Rebecca's ability to research and she's doing great.
Time that the prosecutor and is allowing Rebecca to give to us is very important, and I, I appreciate it very much. And Mr. Jake, I would say figure out a way to make a tiny house, not an RV. If it has tires on it, I, I call them the same, if it doesn't have tires on it, I'm a thumbs up.
That's your fourth topic.
Yeah, put it up on block or something.
Well, I mean, usually you want, like, whenever you used to park your tiny house, you, you know, just like an RV, you know, jack it up, so then it's like.
Well, that's fine, if your tiny house ain't moving. The tires off.
You want the tires off.
It was a trailer.
I mean, all I know is, if I was in a, if I had a tiny house and I lived on the west side of the county, I would definitely want my tires on in case there's a fire and I could just.
Hook up and go.
Go, yeah.
I'm the only one who gets to keep my house, yeah.
I gotta be able to differentiate a tiny house from an RV, so some way in that, whether it's a HUD sticker, something, otherwise.
Can't really get a HUD sticker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a conversation to have with labor and industries.
Homeowner's insurance.
No homeowner's insurance.
Is, is it a vehicle insurance you could get with?
It's be like a RV.
My point, well, if it's an RV, it's an RV, that's my point, make it different than an RV if you wanna treat it different than an RV.
Well, I think, there's, there's a way through everything, it's just writing words on paper and getting you to agree to it.
That could be the hard part, he hasn't so far written any two words on paper.
That's probably because he's smarter than us.
That's true.
Other.
There's no comment.
Uh, one thing I did wanna bring up before I forget was. Do we, the discuss, we started the discussion on Tuesday about, uh, citizen comment and adjusting the time. And I would propose that we. That we do. Cause we're getting more people that wanna comment, and it's, seven minutes is really generous across the.
And they tend to repeat themselves a lot with seven minutes.
Well, and you wanna.
Seven minutes, so.
To use it all, and so what I would suggest, uh, maybe we go, you know, we don't, we go to five minutes and we see. How that works as far as, are we, is that, are we still having a backlog of people that? Cause everybody uses all of their, even the, now it's seven minutes, there's some people only talk to, three is a more universal, that's.
We usually roll around four people in thirty minutes is what we get through.
Right.
And if we have any back and forth, we had, we have forty-four people on, on the Zoom. And we get through four people at seven minutes, and it's the same.
Right.
Usually.
I think we do three minutes, and if there's extra time, we'll let them speak again.
We're not looking into prioritizing the, you know, we're having some folks at the same comments every single week. Uh, of, of like once a month, or at least the differing people that commented the previous month to the end of the line. In case time is short, are looking at a maybe mechanism like that, uh. I would still think of the seven minutes.
Yeah, it's hard though to, how do you, then that requires discretion, access to the board, I don't know. That from a practical standpoint, yeah, that totally makes sense, that you shouldn't be able to just hog up all the time. And I, and maybe it's at the point of, it's at the, the board recognize, in the how they recognize your. Meaning, you're, you're free to speak to the board, and maybe, maybe we do it that way. Where it's like, oh, I see, I have five people that wanna speak, one of them has spoken all the time. And so maybe you have to go last, cause you've already had access, and we have limited, cause it is, I'm not interested in. Like, I, I, I like the period, and we have always had that period, and you have to have, so people have a chance. But we also have an agenda that we have to get through, we have the business to get through.
We have a lot of stuff to do.
We got a lot of stuff to do, right, and it makes it, so, and I think, um. But, so I think we do need a lot, yes, sir.
My, my belief is, is it should be three minutes, um, and three minutes allows, if we want to respond to them. Then we have some time built in there, you know, two minutes or back, you know, for response if we choose to. But at seven minutes, and then they're required, they're requesting us to respond after seven minutes, now we're at ten minutes a person or longer.
We can't talk to anybody, right?
So, so three minutes, and honestly, we live in the world of TikTok, you now get one minute, if you can't get your point across to one minute.
True.
It's too late.
I mean, three is, three is plenty adequate enough time, uh, and is actually overkill as far as.
It is, and if you want more than that, send us a letter. You know, I, we respond to the emails, we talked about that, speaking of, I don't know, but, I mean, we're, we're getting more and more people send us. I mean, we're, we're getting more and more people send us emails to all three of us individually rather than BOCC. And then, I mean, I don't know if I respond to each one of them and you respond to each one of them. I mean, are we really just overdoing it? And then you might say something that might be a little different than what I say. And so now they're sitting there more confused because Dan said this, Jake said this.
Or they're not confused. That was the whole point.
I'm not making assumptions.
I was gonna say, if we're going to be responding to each and every email like I tried to do, that could be an issue.
So normally what I, I, I don't usually, if it's to me directly. If it's to the Board of Commissioners and I say I have that. If there's a response, I don't touch it because I feel like there should only.
We guys don't.
We don't see, I don't see, we can't see all the other stuff. Right, we never do reply all because we shouldn't see any of that.
And most of the time I don't even reply significantly. I take that person's email, put it over here, start a whole new one. So there isn't a possibility of, of a change. But yeah, you'll.
But what will happen is then they will, but then they, and those are the ones I don't respond to. So what they'll do is like, oh, I talked, you know, Commissioner Christopher said blah, 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 blah. And then it's like, and it's like, I can't respond to that because now I, you are now communicating. Yeah, exactly.
Essentially, they've emailed the whole board. I've taken their email, put it over here and sent one separately to them. It's not attached to that one. And then they CC one of these two guys in the response to me.
Yep, they've done that.
Especially for the Board of Commissioners is, is, you know, the idea is to ensure transparency, but in practice it can be very difficult to. Commercial constituents because you want to be responsible to constituents. You don't want to just blow on constituents, obviously. That's why we're. Paid by tax dollars where we serve our constituents. But at the same time, most constituents have very little. Accurate understanding of the limitations imposed on you. I think it's a little bit of a meeting. And so unless they get that response, they get that. And then they don't understand why you can't respond to them via someone. Your colleagues uh, comment because that's a point, it's a discussion.
Cause it's a discussion now that I know what they said.
So if you, when they do that, isn't the appropriate thing to do is Lee takes that and puts it on the board agenda for the next month. Or for the next meeting so that all of that is then disclosed publicly in our packet. And, and that is, and that is the only way to say, because it happens and I was talking with the Skamania County Commissioners. And they said, you know, like if somebody CC, BCC or CCs us all. I mean, that's, we all saw it. So then, then they get it printed out and it goes into the packet, you know.
Every email that somebody just concludes us all in. Even if nobody responds to that email, we, you're.
In order to have a discussion or follow. About it. No, we can all see it. We just can't have, we can't respond. Cause we can only have that discussion.
You can, you can respond individually.
Individually, but I can't.
You're saying if like my case where I took that person, I took them over on the side and then after that they BCC'd everybody in it. Or CC'd everybody in it and you got to see what I typed when that's not the way I.
But I can't, right, we can't, then we can't have that discussion until we bring it up at the, then it's, then it's in the public domain. So yeah, no, I've seen your, we've all seen each other's comments before.
Jake and then I'm just.
I'm done.
The minute I see something from him, it's.
Yeah, I'm done. So, cause I can't.
You've seen that for me too, so.
I use, it's always on Facebook. So how does that work when you see it on Facebook, you know?
I don't. I have a filter though.
That's, yeah.
So, okay, so sounds like the, so Aaron, we're both in three minutes.
I would prefer three.
Three minutes and with the understanding, okay, the, the, the board may respond at our, may respond at our discretion to allow more time. And if there is, then if there's time left over people, we can go back through and they can comment again.
I would say if, if you go back through, you would, you could. I don't know, I was gonna say if you go back through it, limited to, but on the retail.
I will, I will say though that if somebody is not using. The calm and respect, I will not respond to any comments. I, I made that, it's a hard rule in my family and in my house that. Um, unless you speak with respect, you will not get spoken back to. I don't believe in negative reinforcement.
I agree.
Well, that's what I said on, to, you know, it's like it is at the, the citizen comment is just that.
Tuesday, myself included. I don't think they.
You know, I kept my mouth shut though.
Oh, so you're.
I was, I was reading the handful of patients part here over and over and over.
I was reading.
I need to make my own.
Yeah, that it's, it's not, you can say, and I'm, and it is unfortunate because there is a long. History, long before my time, that there, it was informal. There was discussion. There was, that's. That only recently.
Those people would show up standing in front of us and. Act the way they act when they can hide the answer. I don't think they would stand there and say the thing, things that they say via Zoom. So because we have a Zoom. People are gonna act differently. Cause I call a keyboard cowboy.
Yeah, I.
But there are some things that come to the OCC that I do respond to. On your behalf.
Yeah.
And I try to make sure you see my response and what that was.
Oh yeah, we love that. We just don't respond to you, so we don't have a problem.
At that time, sometimes you guys do respond back to that person anyway. I don't think you really, you don't have to, you don't want to. But I always try to make sure you see what's coming out of your office.
Okay, any thing, do we, what else do we have?
We do have, I wanted to bring to your attention that fair. They have a special occasion license that you'll need to sign. Um, I did not send it to each one of you right now because you can discuss it right now. It's, looks like it's their beer garden possibly.
Oh, yeah. Yes, for them to get.
You don't have to respond because if there is no response, they automatically.
It's automatically, yes, but it also takes more time if we don't respond. Are they up against their limits?
No, I don't think so. It's, we're still a month away.
I'm, I'm happy to, if the board's okay, if we're okay with deciding.
Moratoriums are all the rage these days.
I guess.
That's why, and I, just why we've got all the experts in the room. Be. Cause I, that was my discussion yesterday was about the, the correct use of terminology. You know, we, we have suspended code compliance. We don't have a moratorium on. And I wanted to make sure that's, yeah, cause that's a legal term to me and more, a moratorium is a, where you, you know, if we, if we. Stopped doing something, that's not a moratorium. I mean, it is, but it, but I, anyway.
Well, to me, I, I don't care whether you call it a moratorium or a suspension or whatever the heck you call it. As far as I'm under the understanding is we have no law we can enforce. Right, man.
Well, that's not a moratorium.
That's what I'm saying. So it's regardless of what word is.
I mean, from a, from a practical standpoint, the, if the, if the, the effect is the same, where you're not doing something.
We don't have a title.
But be careful.
You are not allowed to exercise the rights that would, would have.
Nor regularly been.
I haven't ever used moratorium. I mean, that's you don't want something.
Yeah.
So, I don't think I.
Um, do we have anything else for these two? Cause like they got.
They got work to do.
We got office deck.
Get out of here.
Give you an update too on your town hall meeting. I have, you also have something to sign there. I talked with the Glenwood School.
You're okay with us.
They're fine. And she, it was nice because she suggested. You know, don't make it too early because people need to have time to get home to be able to come.
Right, no, I like that.
Six thirty to eight thirty. And she's gonna make sure they have a PA system for us to use. They have a brand new system. And also wifi will be available.
Is that good enough in timing for us?
Prosecutor can ask.
No, no, this August seventeenth, the date.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what it is. Cause I know there's time. The first date we roll in here.
Yeah, I, I agree. Two hours is a heck of a long time for this discussion. I think it could. I think we should go in, have a discussion, make it, it, the long.
Do we have to set a time as far, can we just say start at six? We could be in the building.
If they say six seventy to eight thirty, I think you're gonna have people doing multiple comments. It's gonna get sidetracked. It's gonna get in the weeds. It's gonna get messy. I think the last one after about an hour, hour fifty.
Right, we were, that became non-productive.
And yeah, maybe.
And I will, I will take responsibility for that. My.
Say an hour fifteen, if we want to stick around after that, then. Discussion.
Well, even getting people out the door, shall we say, six thirty to eight.
Right.
And then.
Oh, for what this, for what, what we say our meeting is and what we put on here, we want to put more on here than what we think our meeting.
I was gonna use, it's not that, we're not, the only thing is I don't want there to be any misunderstanding when we publish this, that it's like a. Like an open house where, where, where you could show up. It's like, oh, I can't get there till eight or twenty, just. No, and we will, um, one thing too, did we have a, we should have a, we should reach out to the sheriff. Invite the sheriff as well, cause he is in, he's one of the parties. And, and you are good with this date as far as that works in your schedule?
And I'm assuming we are gonna make this to discuss track the, not. Shoreline management or solar rentals or.
It's specific to the, what did I say?
Yeah, we were trying to find.
Yeah.
Specific, general.
Something outside that scope.
We're not, no, this is not a town hall to talk about big issues and we'll remind me then to re- reinforce that to myself. Cause I have a tendency to, no, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at everybody because it's like, well, while we're here, is there anything else you want to talk? I know, and I remind me, I will write it on the bottom of here. But isn't, this is, this is specific to the issues in, in Glenwood. Do we want to get some feedback from folks?
Well, I were reading, I got an email from Steve Gilmore.
Well, how did your thing go yesterday?
Saying, uh, says, hi Art and Greg, this was forwarded from Wendy, who, who did the thing up there. Steve was out of the area or something. Um, he said, you two and the collective commissioner were just awesome and dazzled Linda Steiner as expected. Thank you for spending so much time with us and giving her tons of things to think about. Um, it went really well. I mean. It was, it wasn't that, it was, it was so. Um, essentially it sounds like they do about uh, nine hundred thousand tons. Their landfill is full by twenty forty. Um, so they're either gonna have to do, you know, trash to rail essentially or put their own. Concentrator, you might say, if they need to still haul it out.
That's Kathy.
So it sounds like they might be still looking at a, a pilot project. Uh, of possibly shipping off a hundred thousand ton. To, to see how it works and, and they were, uh, this chick is the second in command up there. She's got a staff of four hundred. King County.
Wow.
Staff of four hundred. Um, and she's gonna be more than likely number one in command. Real shortly, so.
Okay, good. Good job there. Use your, your, um. Your guiding skills for good.
There you go. No, we didn't, we didn't talk about clean energy and how we're supplying all the, gonna be supplying all the power to King County. I shall take your trash too.
Yes, bring it to us.
For when, for when we get close.
When we get close, yeah, not today. Yes, that's the. General. Sp- specific general language. Okay.
Okay, I've got nothing else.
No, I had childcare yesterday, but I don't want to discuss.
Okay, I'm making motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, I have a motion of a second to adjourn the meeting till next Tuesday. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thanks folks on the Zoom meeting.